Russell, if you can just call the order.
So Mayor Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Albritton?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Here.
For our mayor.
Excellent, thank you. Let's, uh, Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Um, before, before we get started, I just wanted to, um, just give our condolences to a couple of families. Barbara and Lee Lester in the loss of their son. We just, uh, we pass on our condolences as a town to them. And then Councilman Albritton, his wife Rose, um, we pass our condolences on to you as well with the passing of Rose's brother. So hearts and prayers go out to you all and, um, you know, you're in our thoughts. Um, if we could just have maybe a moment of, of silence for those. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, um, public comment.
Uh, Mayor, I believe we're actually in the local plan-
Oh, sorry. Wrong agenda.
That's okay.
Yep, yeah, let's do the LPA.
Discuss the first item if you'd like me to read it into the record.
Please do, please do, thank you.
First one is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, making a recommendation that the town council adopt an amendment to the text of the future land use element of the town's comprehensive land, uh, comprehensive plan to amend policy 1.3 to prevent future incompatible land uses, providing for an effective date.
Great, thank you very much. Um, I just want to say a word about this item. This was an item that, um, after seeing what had occurred in Sunshine Ranches with the potential development of the property there at the New Testament Church, and the developer was attempting to put in one acre properties there rather than the two to two and a half acre properties. We just, I, you know, to, to, from my perspective, we're just never going to approve that. So why even give the illusion to any developer coming in that we would approve it? And on the other side, why create all of the anxiety and issues of having to fight that, um, from a resident standpoint? So let's just get it on the books that if there are properties that you're looking to rezone, um, you can only rezone it for the lowest density that's next to it. So if you're, if you're abutting a one acre and a two and a half acre, it's gotta be two and a half acres. Um, so, so that's what this is about. Um, I think it's right in line with who we are as a town and then the rural lifestyle and preserving our open spaces. So that's, that's what this item is about.
Motion to approve.
Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any comments on this item? Is there any public comment on this item?
I don't see any hands raised, Mayor. Uh, we got one.
Okay.
The first speaker will be Christina Brownlow. Ms. Brownlow, can you hear us?
Yes, gentlemen. Uh, thank you and Happy Earth Day and just in a, an appreciative remark on behalf of the Sunshine Homeowners Association and paying attention to the work and effort that went in on our side and listening to the residents. So thank you very, very much. This, um, resolution is very appreciated.
Great, thank you, Chris.
Okay, Mayor, I don't believe we have any other speakers, Mayor.
Okay, any, any further public comment? I mean, council comment?
No.
Seeing none, uh, Russell, if you could please call the roll.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, thank you. All right, and then item number four.
Item number four is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, making a recommendation that the town council, excuse me, adopt an amendment to Article 130 zoning amendments of the Unified Land Development Code to modify criteria for review and approval of rezoning requests and make revisions of a housekeeping nature, providing for an effective date. Motion approved.
Second. Thank you. So this is a companion item to the first one that go together, both accomplishing the same, the same goal. All right, any council comment on this item? Any public comments?
I don't see any speakers raising their hands from the public, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Russell. Um, if you could please call the roll.
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then item number five?
Item number five, Mayor, is just a set of minutes for the local planning agency meeting from January 28th. Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any corrections, additions to the minutes? Seeing none, any public comment, additions, corrections to the minutes?
Don't see any, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Russell, if you could please, uh, call the question.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so the LPA is adjourned. And Russell, if you could please, uh, call the roll for the regular council meeting.
Certainly, Mayor. Uh, Mayor Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Albritton?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Present.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, let's, uh, rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now, public comment.
Okay, Mayor, we have some speakers raising their hands. So we have some members of the Sikh Youth Association that would like to speak about the 5K, so we'll start with them.
Great.
So we have Pavit Paul Macar, Japit Paul Macar, and Navnit. Um, let me just call on them. One second. And we have, um, okay. Uh, okay, can you?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm Japit Paul Singh.
I am Pavit Paul Singh.
And I am Navnit Cor. On behalf of the Sikh Youth Association, we thank you for your time.
The Sikh Youth Association, in partnership with the town of Southwest Ranches, is organizing the third annual Race for Unity and Diversity Virtual 5K Run slash Walk. Keeping health and safety protocols in mind this year, a vet will be brought to you virtually. This online event will take place starting from this Saturday, April 24th, 2021, to May 9th, 2021. The goal of this event is to empower the youth to become active members in their communities, as well as to foster an understanding of people from all walks of life. The proceeds from this 5K run slash walk will go to benefit the town of Southwest Ranches College Scholarship Fund, which provides financial aid to students entering college. We encourage everyone to invite their family and friends to support this cause, all while promoting a healthy lives, healthy and active lifestyle.
In order to register as a runner or donate to our cause, scan the QR code shown on the race flyer and it will redirect you to the registration website. In order to scan the QR code, open the camera app on your smartphone and point the camera towards the QR code. Then you can click on the link. Be sure to post the registration link on any social media sites or community bulletins so that we can get as many people as possible to join us on our mission. Make sure that you register your family, friends, and coworkers. Through the virtual platform, you can even invite family and friends living out of state or in a different country. So go out there and spread the word.
During the last town meeting, we reviewed how the virtual 5K will work. Let's go through another refresher today in case anyone has any questions. This year's 5K will be held virtually through the Race Joy mobile app. Here's how a virtual 5K works. First, go to the App Store or Google Play on your smartphone and download the Race Joy app. Next, click on featured races or go to the search bar in order to find our race. Finally, follow the prompts to set up your phone for race day and click "I Want to be Tracked." That's it. Now you are ready to go. The virtual 5K event will last two weeks, starting from this Saturday, April 24th to May 9th. You can pick any day in those two weeks to run your race. Just before you start running, make sure you click the green button to turn on tracking and select the course you will run. It is recommended to turn off your Wi-Fi before you start running. Make sure you pick a safe place to run and make sure that you are actually moving so that the GPS can track you. That means that you can choose to run in a park or around the neighborhood, but you cannot run on your treadmill. While running, have your phone with you at all times so you can track how far along your friends are, send them a shout out, and receive personalized tracking alerts. The app will let you know when you have completed the 5K and you can check out the automated virtual results after you finish running. If you would like to review this information again, scan the QR code on the flyer and our registration website has a step-by-step manual on how to use Race Joy. All registrants also receive an email following the completion of the registration explaining how the remotely held 5K will work. You can also email us at ssof youth at gmail dot com for more information.
We would also like to gladly inform you that we will be holding a fundraiser at the Chipotle on Pines Boulevard this Saturday, April 24th, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. When placing your order, make sure to show the cashier the flyer on your smartphone, or you can tell the cashier you are supporting our cause. This will ensure that a third of the proceeds from your meal will go to the Sikh Youth Association. So once again, please mark your calendars for this Saturday, April 24th, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and join us at the Chipotle on Pines Boulevard to show your support for unity and diversity.
Thank you for giving us time. Thank you for giving us this time to share this with you all. As a reminder, the virtual 5K event will be held from this Saturday, April 24th to May 9th, and we encourage you to register yourselves, your family, and your friends. Also, we hope you will join us at our Chipotle fundraiser this Saturday, April 24th. Even though conducting a virtual race during a pandemic has made it especially challenging to reach out to our local community, we are hoping that with your help and word of mouth advertising that we are able to make this year's race a success like years before. Today, more than ever, it is important that we show that there is more, more that brings us together than what drives us apart. And we want you to be the part, to be part of our mission. Thank you.
Thank you all. I just really appreciate, um, every year you all really step up and, um, just really, you know, it's, it's, it's a great fundraiser, but more than that, it's a great way for our community to come together and recognize the importance of the diversity that we have. So thank you all for doing this and, um, we just really appreciate it. And I just encourage everybody in town to participate and, and, um, and sign up. It's a great event. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, okay, Mayor, we have, uh, looks like two other speakers. Uh, Ed Gonzalez, looks like the next one in line that wants to speak. Let me allow him to speak.
Um, Mr. Minis?
Yes.
Um, is my, I just wanted to make sure if my mic was still on.
Yeah, um, we're gonna, we're gonna remove you from talking, just give me-
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's Ed Gonzalez. How are you? Thank you for your time. How you doing? I live at 6500 Holatay Trail, and I'm also on the Drainage Committee. And today I had the pleasure of speaking to one of our patrol officers. And my background is law enforcement technology. So as I spoke to her, uh, she was very happy with, of course, the lasers that we have provided, uh, for their patrol cars. And she was telling me how, what a great job it's been doing for them. So I asked her the next step, which is things like the mobile data terminal in your car. Is it newer technology or is it, um, older technology? She says, well, frankly, our cars, what we have in there right now is an older technology. And I thought about that is if we have these patrol officers in here working for us and keeping us safe, if the city can afford it and if Davey will accept it, I think maybe we could offer to provide some of the newer technology, which will make their jobs easier, especially if they pull someone over, they can do a background check, they can rent their license, they can scan their tag, things like that, you know, in current time. So just my thought, that's something the city might want to look into and speak to Davey about. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Okay, the next speaker, uh, would be Jennifer Dactin. Ms. Dactin?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yes. We can hear you, Jen.
Sorry, it froze. Um, I don't know, is, if we have questions, is now the appropriate time to act, ask if it's according to, uh, the-
Yes, yes, now's the-
Anything like that. Um, so I had a question in regards to the comp board meeting and the nursery ordinance. Um, it was something I brought up at the meeting, um, but my question wasn't answered. Um, we're pushing to pass this ordinance and working on getting it done and getting it organized. But my question was, is aren't we just forcing people that don't currently have ag exemption to apply for ag exemption then, if we're not allowing them to actually go about and have their nursery business? Um, according to this law, from my understanding, it's only going to affect people that do not currently have ag that are paying a higher tax bracket. So now by going after them, we'd be forcing them to get ag if they want to continue their business. That was just one of the questions I had that I'd see if one of you guys could answer for me. Um, it's also been brought to our attention that there's a couple of both ag and non-ag properties that Code has visited um, in regards to animals and agriculture and stuff like that. And I wasn't aware if any of the council members were aware of these properties and if they had gone out and visited them. I did tag most of you on a couple of the posts on Facebook, um, but I haven't received a response from anybody.
Great, thank you, Jen.
Okay, Mayor, uh, we have no other public speakers.
Okay, um, I guess I'll, I'll weigh in on, on Jen's, Jen's first question there. And I think the, the point there, Jen, certainly is not to push any of these entities into ag. I think the vast majority of them, um, as I'm sure you're well aware, there's huge tax benefits for being ag. And so if they can qualify for ag, they're going to qualify for ag regardless. Uh, we're not going to really push them one way or the other. They can do it, you know, it's just, I've never known anybody not to do, do it. I mean, it's just the, the benefit is huge. So, um, so I don't, I don't really see that as a factor coming into play. Um, I think the idea of the nursery ordinance here is really to, as you, as you stated, which is absolutely correct, that this only applies to non-ag and it's to bring those entities into, um, more of a, um, harmony with the other properties around them. That's the purpose of it. But thanks for asking a question. Any other comments, uh, related to public comment? All right, um, let's jump into the board reports.
Okay, we have our first speaker, Mayor, will be Christina Brownlow. Ms. Brownlow? Can you hear us?
Yes. Yeah, hi, gentlemen. I had to, uh, you know, had to unmute. I have the, uh, pleasure of being the chair for our Parks, Recreation, Forestry, and Natural Resources Advisory Board. And the reason I elaborated on the title is today is Earth Day. So, uh, Happy Earth Day, we're having a meeting tonight. And I wanted to apprise you of our latest meeting and the things we were talking about. This first item, I must thank you all, or actually on behalf of the board, please, uh, we must thank you all because you have approved our allocated, uh, budget items for this year. When we start each year, we look at what the funding issues are. And for 2021, you all have approved upgrades to the Country Estates Fishing Hole Playground, the Equestrian Park Playground, the Roanoke's or Roca, as we name it, Fitness Trail, the Roca Wetlands, and the Country Estates Ball Field. So gentlemen, thank you for your blessing and approval and the forward on these items. Uh, another thing that happened, uh, one of our residents came to Mayor Bright Cruz and apprised him of the plight of the monarch. And some of you might think a butterfly is insignificant, but the monarchs migrate in the West to the tune of hundreds of thousands of org, uh, of animals. And to think that's something of that volume and that amount could possibly be endangered or approaching extinction is somewhat unfathomable. We have monarchs present here in Florida. They, they may not do those migrations, but they're part of a sink pol, uh, a sink population. Mayor Bright Cruz didn't hesitate to accept and jump on what's called the Monarch Pledge as put forth through the National Wildlife Federation. He has signed on, he has signed on the town, and he has told staff, please, let's move forward with this. Apprise the residents. Let's talk about proper plannings, utilize the board as a sounding board, if you will. And, uh, we are right on there with you, Mayor, and we couldn't be happier. We've discussed things like the native milkweed species, and, uh, we're even looking at some events where our board can actually get out more in the public, be a visible entity, and be part of these, uh, milkweed plant giveaways and educational services. This ties into us as a rural community and maintaining this lifestyle, our role in preserving resources and, uh, going toward maintaining our certification as a habitat community. Our board is also committed to drafting a design theme for the Country Estates Fishing Hole entrance. This is a proposed, uh, project. We are in collaboration with one of the other boards, the Rural Arts. But we're very excited. And if you've seen Equestrian Park, there's this very cool and unique entrance. Since it is equestrian, it's very horse-like, so we think Country Estates Fishing Hole may have some type of fishing theme. So we're excited to be part of that and to soon, um, send something out. And one of our board members is collaborative, collaborating with our staff liaison to draft some language. Again, today is Earth Day. Thank you for your commitment to our board, your support of our initiatives. And I want to take this time to thank the colleagues who serve with me on the board. They're a wonderful group of ladies. They volunteer freely of their time. We have an exceptional liaison, uh, December Laurentano, and we have the support of all of you. So none of this could work without this being together. The final item, there's a gentleman named Rick Cormier of Lemon Lime, and this gentleman has just been exceptional. He has brought mulching material to our town through donation. It has shown up and been spread at various park locations. Uh, you know, unannounced even, even when there might have been plans to make this happen. And he, he has saved us thousands of dollars and he's, he's, uh, elaborated on this beautification. So I know there will be a proclamation forthcoming. It's, it, it's a wonderful show of how neighboring towns are getting together. And it's things like this that are the glue of our town and our relationships with our neighbors. So again, thank you for, uh, allowing me to chair this year. Thank you to my colleagues on the board who serve with me. Uh, thank you to my staff liaison, and thank you, gentlemen. Happy Earth Day, everyone.
Happy Earth Day. Thank you, Chris. You're on mute, Russell.
Sorry about that, Mayor. The next speaker is Jason Hallberg. Mr. Hallberg?
Yes, uh, hello, gentlemen, council. Uh, good evening. This is Jason Hallberg, uh, Chair of the Comp Board. Let me just make sure you guys are able to hear me before I continue.
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Um, so the, the Comprehensive Planning Board is currently working on the nursery ordinance. We have received some great input, uh, from both the community as well as, uh, board members, which we are currently incorporating into our discussions. You know, I also, I just want to, on behalf of the board, like to, again, welcome our two newest members to the board, uh, George Lorenzo and Danny Perdilla. They are both owner-operators of current nurseries in our town, and we definitely look forward to their insight and their knowledge as we continue our discussions. Also, I just want to make sure that it's pretty clear that, uh, you know, we understand as a board the importance of this ordinance. I know that there's been many iterations of it that we've been working on for several years. But, uh, I just want to make sure that, uh, you know, everyone's aware that we're, we're going to dedicate the time, uh, that it takes to get this right. And, uh, we want to make sure that when I say right, that it's right for both the, you know, the nursery folks as well as the residents. And, uh, you know, as I had, uh, said in the last, uh, meeting, you know, this is a balance. And, uh, it's creating, uh, trying to create a harmonious balance between, you know, the history of our town, which are these nurseries, and, uh, and our residents. And, uh, we are going to work really hard on making sure that we create that balance and, and again, keep all the stakeholders in mind or the interest of those stakeholders. So, again, uh, that's the update and, uh, we'll continue, uh, working through this. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jason.
Mayor, it appears we have no other board reports.
Excellent. Uh, council member comments? Like, uh, all right, Gary.
I'll go, I'll go first.
Awesome.
Unless somebody else wants the honor, I'll, I'll jump in. Uh, just a few things. Don't, I don't have a lot today, uh, which is kind of unusual. So I'll give everybody else a chance, uh, give everybody a break. But a few things I want to bring up, a couple of, uh, information, information, uh, notices on the 13th of July, we're gonna, planning on having the, uh, uh, Roanoke's Barn photo shoot for first responders, uh, courtesy of our resident photographer, Bob. Um, it will be a, a pretty, uh, interesting event. It'll all be shot with drones and still cameras. Um, I think it'll be a real tribute to our first responders, so I want to make sure everybody, uh, and I'll keep saying it over and over, uh, it's at 5:00 PM. Uh, on the 13th of July, there is a rain date in case we have that. And I believe it's the following, uh, weekend. Bob, if, uh, you may know that number better than I do. The virtual 5K walk and run, uh, is already, uh, the, uh, Sikh Youth Association has already mentioned it, so I won't, I won't, uh, get into it too deeply because they did an outstanding job of letting everybody know about it. And as Chris Brownlow mentioned, today is Earth Day. Uh, it was founded in 1970. It was, uh, term, a few fun facts about Earth Day. It was, uh, did, uh, the name came from a gentleman by the name of Julian Koenig. He's, um, he was the one who came up with the, uh, advertising for Think Small with Volkswagen back in the seventies. He was a, uh, Madison Avenue guy. And, uh, April 22nd was, uh, chosen, uh, for a couple of reasons. One was, uh, it was the, it's the birthday of John Muir, who, uh, which most people don't know that. And coincidentally, the guy who came- And coincidentally, the guy who came up with the name Earth Day, it's also his birthday. So go figure on, go figure how that would worked out. So, but in regarding Earth Day, most people don't realize what that caused. That is the, that was the single largest mass demonstration worldwide involved over 200 million people. These are like relative facts. Out of the, out of the Earth Day, which was really got it going with Senator Gaylord Nelson of Wisconsin. And also was backed financially. And these, these were the guys that really kind of made it happen was the United Auto Workers Union, believe it or not. They're the ones that offered the financial support, the phone banks, the whatnot. And without their, their help, it would have probably flopped on year one. But they made it to that. And they were very conscientious on the Clean Air Act and several landmark legislation, legislation. The national legislation has come out of the Earth Day observance. One being the Endangered Species Act, another one is the Clean Water Act, another one is the Clean Air Act. And the Paris Climate Accords, which, you know, if you agree with that or not, that's political football going on right now. And the EPA was formed all because, as a direct result of Earth Day. So it's, it's something to be proud of, it's something that we push constantly here in Southwest Ranches. We don't call it Earth Day, but every day here is virtually Earth Day. We have so many, you know, the wonderful nurseries that we have around here, the farm animals, you name it. It's, you know, people, you know, picking up trash on the side of the road. We, we live, we live that life out here. We really do, you know, we're not a commune, we're not a bunch of old hippies here and things like that, but we live that life. And I'm proud to say that, that a part of that, so I just wanted to mention that. The other thing I want to mention too is a reference to residents and getting questions answered by their representatives. Myself personally, I cannot speak for the other council members, but the first thing I was told to do was not to go on any social media sites, Facebook or anything like that. That you could, can get entrapped in, in different things. And when all somebody has to do is ask you how you're going to vote on something, then you say it and you're, you've got an ethics violation on your hands. I'm more than happy to answer questions at any time, anybody. A lot of people do call me, my phone number at Town Hall is 954-343-7456. It's in the newsletter. We'd be happy to answer any questions, but Facebook is, is somewhere I don't go to. And I don't debate in that, I don't get into that at all, because it is very problematic for an elected official to do that. The town has a Facebook page, and I know people reference announcements back and forth to it. And occasionally, some, some members of the council may chime in to set a record straight or something like that, but that's at their prerogative. But I personally do not do any social media on that, I'd rather interact with, with the residents on, on a case-by-case basis. All they have to do is call me, which a lot of them do. And they leave a message and I get it right back to them because I get an email notification. Last thing I want to mention, Mayor, if you'll indulge me, we have talked about the 100-year rains. And we've, from last November. And I'm pretty sure we're, they're going to be no longer 100-year range, they're going to be semi-annual, annual, or every couple of year event. And I really want to do something about the lack of high ground that we have with our animals. And we talked about this before. And what I'd like to do, and I'm not, I'm not going to do what I did the last couple of meetings, so relax. And Marty, you know, take a deep breath, you're okay, all right? But I'd like to direct Andy, with the council's blessing, to look at two locations in our town, bringing in elevating several acres. One is in the turnout area of the Rolling Oaks Park, which is approximately 7.89 acres. Possibly taking two to four acres of that area and elevating it a foot or two. The engineers can tell us what the, what the number should be. And possibly doing that there. And also continuing, we already know it's dry because we just went through it in November. The Green Meadow Sanctuary area of increasing that five acres for, in other words, continuing the fill process on a portion of it. So that we can have a staging area, you know, because just think about it, if we use that area for horses, goats, or cattle, or whatever. Just the loading and unloading area requires quite an area with the trailers and, and things of that nature. And what I'd like to do is task Andy and the engineering department with coming up with some numbers of what they think it would take to do that. And possibly we can use it as a future project going forward. So if you guys could, when you do your comments, if you could chime in on that, so Andy has some direction. I don't want to put a number on it, I know we have some money left over from some previous revenue. I, I don't want to get into how much of that this would cost or anything like that. I'd rather let Andy come back to us with the project specifications. But I think we're all on board on doing something like this. And I like the fact that we use two, two areas of town. One, one where it's accessible off of Griffin Road for anybody east of the town. And then you have one off of Rolling Oaks Barn for the western portion of the town. So this is just an idea at this point, and I want to flesh it out and try to make it happen. That's all I have there.
Great, thank you, Gary. Before we, anyone else jumps in there, Solons, this topic is on the table. Maybe we can just give our views, comments, concerns, approval. What do we, what's the thoughts of the rest along this idea? Yeah, David?
Thank you, Mayor Steve. I think this is a wonderful idea. Right after those rains in November, I drove all over and saw so much flooding. And yeah, I have a car and there's a lot of times that it was questionable on certain roads that I would go through. But the, primarily the horses, the equestrian community definitely needed a lot of relief. And I think that these are great, great ideas.
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can you reach out to the construction industry? They were the ones that filled that property before, they needed a place to put the fill. There's a lot of construction going on around, and they need a place to dump the fill. And maybe we could work something out with them where they could come and bring the fill and not cost us anything. That'd be a great thing if, if there was a way to do that, if, you know, if somebody had an idea, to reach out to them, that'd be great.
Great, great. But overall, you support the idea?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, awesome, great, Bob, sorry about that, Bob.
No problem, I like the idea a lot. I might suggest some fencing though, over at Southwest Meadows Sanctuary is part of the whole thing. That's not really fencing well enough to put any livestock in there, we'll have them wandering around the streets before the storm's over. But I like the idea.
Yeah, great addition, Bob, I had in my notes here about fencing, and I just, I apologize for that.
We're a team.
Yeah, yeah, requires fencing over in Green Meadow. The good news is in Rolling Oaks, it's already the turnout area. We would already, we would already have facilities, you know, for fencing for that, mention that for the record.
Very good. And I certainly support this as well, I think it's a great idea. It's, you know, it was part of what we discussed when we did the drainage summit earlier in the year. And it's great to see some of those ideas that we discussed there kind of take on life and begin to become a reality. So thank you for bringing that up, thank you for pushing it forward, and I certainly support it. Excellent, thanks.
Yeah, I'm definitely going to, you know, keep, keep, keep going with it until we, until we come to some sort of an agreement, you know, on how, on how to implement this.
Excellent, great, thank you.
Andy, do you have any questions to ask or anything?
Oh, I, I, I think I got it, the council's very supportive of it, and we're going to look at, at those two areas and see what we can, we can do. And we'll report back out to you all.
Great.
Yeah, no, I think, I think you're pretty clear, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, who's, who's next on the council? Yeah, Jim.
I'd like to just follow up a little bit on what Gary said earlier. In the town newspaper this month, you'll see, I had an article there. There's been a lot of misconception, a lot of rumors going around in town. And I just ask people to reach out to your councilman, reach out to the mayor, I know the mayor has a program he's going to talk about that he has going. And let's see if we can't get these rumors stopped. This council is busting their tail to make sure that everything is uppity up, that everything's out in the open. We're not hiding anything, we're not doing anything behind closed doors that would make anybody believe that something's wrong. I'm very proud to be a part of this council. And, you know, this, this stuff, this false information going around really needs to be stopped. I think that a lot of people have heard and, and starting to believe different now, that they've heard some things from some of the other people on some of the other boards. And some new people that came on, and so the people that start in all this, I, I hope that you would stop and, and let's get the town back together. And then I heard from a couple of residents here in Green Meadows, the mail theft that took place three, four weeks back. The bank called two people today, one this morning, one this afternoon. The checks that had been stolen were washed and corrected. One check was for $8,000, it was changed to $23,000. The other check was somewhere in the neighborhood of about $4,000, and it was changed to $15,000. I don't know why somebody would take a check for $8,000, wash it, and try to make it 23 without knowing that there was funds there. I mean, if it's an $8,000 check, you got to figure there's funds to cover 8,000. Why would they change it to 23? I was really suspicious of that, I'm a suspicious person anyhow. I'm just wondering if somebody at the bank's not helping them. And I don't mean that in a bad way, but something's not right. Because they wait two or three weeks and then, you know, they try to do that. So these are the things we're faced with, and I thank Jeff, I put those two people onto Jeff to have them build a case against the gentleman they did catch. But, you know, I think the police department's doing a great job. And the officer that spoke before the pass, when Ed Gonzalez, the idea of helping them with anything that they can put in the cars to make it easier for them to see who is in that car that they just stopped, I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jim. Yeah, David?
All right, thank you, Mayor, thank you for the time. Hi, council, or hi residents, David Kozinski, District Four. Yeah, the police officers that were writing citations along Lou Ray Road were issuing quite a few citations, stopping even more. Issuing a lot of warnings. There apparently was one worker, not a resident, but a, a worker who gave the police officer a hard time. These are law enforcement officers that are laying their lies on the line every day for us. And they really need our support, and I think they're doing a really good job. And I commend Councilmember Albritton for pushing the, the issue with stronger traffic enforcement. And Councilmember Jablonsky for introducing the issue with the new, the additional radars. It was great, great ideas, and I think they're making an impact on one of the biggest complaints in the town, which has been speeding. Moving on, is my understanding that going to the nursery ordinance, which is to, my, my understanding is to put additional restrictions, not shutting off, but additional restrictions on new retail type or nurseries. My understanding is that there had been three prior workshops held in the town. Where our residents resoundingly spoke out that there should be two categories of the types of nurseries. One retail, the other wholesale. And it's my understanding that the residents had really strongly advocated for this. And it's just something that I kind of recall going on over the years. And that the comp plan advisory board should take into consideration all those members that are attending here tonight. That understand that the neighbors, the residents, the people that live here, day after day. Expressed an interest on the two different categories of nurseries, retail and wholesale, and wanted them treated differently based upon the impact to the neighbors. So that's just something that I recall going on over the past years. And then finally, as the arts advisory board had, has been working on the mural at the Founder's Park. And at their most recent meeting, they approved, or they had made a request and approved, making a request to the town for financing to compensate the artist who was given the award for the project for their talent in the 100 feet of the wall. Can't go all the way to the end because the whole wall is not visible, but to the point of where it would be a pleasant view for the people that drive by or go into the park. So the, we'll be looking for that, and bids will be going out to see what artists are interested in making their talent known to the town. That wraps up my comments, thank you, Mayor, thank your council, thank you residents for your support.
Great, thank you very much, yeah, Bob?
Yep, just a couple of quick comments, backing up to Gary's comment on the first responders. We actually have two rain dates since we're doing this in the, in the middle of July. In case it rains on the 13th, we've got a rain date of July the 20th. And if it rains on the 20th, we have it on the 27th as well. So it's, I believe it's three Tuesdays in July are kind of carved out for that. And we've also got some plans to go out there and look for some good locations because, Andy, do you, do you have any idea how many people we would expect out there? How many first responders?
I, I, I would, I would be afraid to guess, I, I really would, I'm hoping we get a really good turnout.
Yeah.
But with, with our residents, we could get, we could get a good, a real good number out there.
Yeah.
I think we're going to have some refreshments out there and try to make it a nice event. But I, I really can't begin to guess how many we're going to have, I swear, sorry. I'd be afraid, I'd be afraid to put a number out there.
Well, it's going to make a difference in terms of the location we pick, because, you know, if it's 100 people, it's one thing, if it's 300 people, we'll, we'll need the whole field. So we'll talk. Concerning Jennifer Dactin's comments on, about social media. First off, I generally read it all the time, although this week is hell week for me, once a quarter, I'm locked in meetings for the entire week, and this is the week. So I'm not sure when she puts something out there, but I'm a little behind on my social media reading. To Gary's point, I went to an ethics training class back about three months ago or so, put on by the League of Cities. And the attorneys that put it on addressed social media very directly. They, they were basically saying that your, your municipal attorney probably has the same opinion as they have in that it's very dangerous to do anything on social media. I've taken the position of really not responding to people's concerns and questions. If I do, it's, it's via, you know, messenger or something along those lines. Because Gary's dead on, if, if I say so, if I take a position on something that's going to appear before the council. I've just broken the sunshine laws, because I know there's a number of other council members that are also read. So they, they'd be seeing my opinion. So I, I pretty much just put information out there. If, if the town puts something out on COVID, I, I've circulated that, the, the Seek Scholarship Walk Run, you know, I put information out on that. But I, I stay away from anything that is political within our, our town or anything that's going to appear before us. Because it's, it's very risky probably doing what I'm doing, somebody could still call and complain and, and file a complaint if they, if they don't see it that way. So I've been staying away from that, from responding as well. Also, I wanted to thank Danny Padilla and George Lorenzo for become member, becoming members of the comp plan board. I think they, they were surprised at the meeting at how passionate people were. The, the comp plan board typically, people feel very strongly in a lot of different areas. So things can get heated, it's generally pleasant, but you know, J- Jason. You know, uh, J- Jason's done a great job of, of uh, keeping everybody uh, reasonable at the meetings, but uh. Certainly welcome their participation and both participated. And uh, that, that participation, guys, comes up as you learn more and more and, and you understand how the processes work. So. Um, that's all I have to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, I just have a few items as well. I, I wanted to uh. Just call out a little bit uh. Uh, Ed Gonzalez, his, his comment that he said earlier, um, regarding the equipment in the Davy Cars. I'm wondering if we can at least look at that as part of um. You know, what we're doing generally around town with the, the license readers. Maybe that's something that could be. I don't know what the cost is, so I'm certainly not proposing it. I'm just saying, let's maybe take a look at it and see if that's something that uh, would have the benefit that uh. We might want to follow up on. Um, I also wanted to do a uh, a shout out to uh, Danny and George, um, the additions to the comp board. Um, but even beyond that, um, you know, we have heard for quite some time. Um, the challenges that George Kalis has had on his property and his neighbor. And um, those two gentlemen, um, Danny and George, um, have. Have gone above and beyond to try and resolve this, kind of be the mediator in the middle. And um, and I just commend them for that. I think that's, that's, that's what we need more of in this town. Is resolving issues among neighbors. Um, and uh, and, and so I really commend them for that and thank them for that. And appreciate what they're doing. Um, I did want to give a quick update on, we did have a mayor's call last Wednesday evening. Um, I think we had a fun time. It was good. Um, and a lot of good questions, a lot of good interaction. Uh, we'll definitely be doing this on the second Wednesday each month. Uh, going forward, and I think we were able to talk through some issues and, and hopefully make a little, make a little progress there. So um, just encourage everybody to join those and um. Feel free to come with questions. Uh, certainly welcome that. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to do is just put a, a quick shout out for the, the educational board. Um, and the uh, the flamingo fundraiser that they did. Um, that was a lot of work. You know, it was a lot of fun for a lot of folks in town. It was certainly fun for me when I woke up one morning and. Saw those flamingos out there, but um, that was a ton of work. And a lot of it was done by students that are gonna be receiving the scholarship uh, monies. They have worked for that money, believe me. And um, so thank you for doing that. I know, I know there were some times there where um. Uh, you know, it, it did not, I'll just leave it there. I think everyone knows what I'm talking about, where it was not welcome, but. Um, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, it was, it was very welcome. And it was um, part of what makes our town so special to be able to share in something like that. So thank you to all who participated in that. Um, and made that happen. Thank you. All right. Um, legal comments, Keith.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, aside from Andy and I getting a call at seven AM on Saturday morning that we were breaking up a wonderful wedding at someone's house. It was a pretty uneventful week and things in the town are, are good and there's nothing really new to report. So um. Uh, we're good. No further comment there. Oh, one, one thing just to say, and I should have led with it. Uh, my thoughts and prayers are, are definitely with the Albrittons and the Lester families and I'm sorry for both their losses.
Great. Thank you, Keith. Yeah, if you, if somebody is listening to this and they're not aware of what we're referring to, just like Google. Southwest Ranches Wedding. That, that would probably do it. That would probably do it. Wedding party. Um, yeah, David.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just to let you, let everybody know, I, I did get a phone call from my brother who lives near Tuscaloosa, Alabama. And they were actually talking about our town near Tuscaloosa, Alabama this morning.
Yeah, yeah, I got some, some calls from relatives around. Crazy world. Um, all right. Uh, administrative comments, Andy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Got it. Just a, a few things to, to share with you tonight. Uh, the first is the community survey deadline was last week that closed. We got a hundred and five responses. Via uh, regular mail and the Dropbox we had out front. So staff will begin compiling those results and getting those reports out to you. So uh. Keep your eyes out for that. That'll be coming soon. Uh, second thing I wanted to mention is the, this year's legislative session is winding down. The State House and Senate are in budget reconciliation. We do have a, a. Drainage, I'm sorry, a guardrail project that, that is, that has survived so far. Uh, which will be very good for the town. Uh, we've got some friends up there who are working for us and it looks like things will be a little bit better than last year. So. I, I'm optimistic that that will survive. That has survived the reconciliation process uh, so far. So uh, hopefully that will continue to survive and then make it through the governor's signature, but we're, we're keeping an eye on that, but that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the town. Uh, another thing I wanted to touch on was the, the license plate readers, the LPR cameras. Uh, Council Mayor, you had directed that, that staff put a policy together on how that would be implemented. And I just want to let the rest of the council know that we have a draft copy that's been completed. I want to thank Russell uh, for his efforts on that. Uh, we're currently reviewing that, that policy. And we're scheduling for the May twenty-seventh meeting to give you, to share that policy with you. And uh, to give you an update on where we are with the project at that time. So we're working on that. We're bringing that forward. Another thing that has been an issue that it, that has, while it hasn't come up tonight, it has at past meetings. Is ways pro service levels and how we're gonna handle that. I, I just want to let you know that, that Rod and Rodley in the Public Works Department have been working on a, a detailed memo outlining. Uh, some of the history and some of the concerns to share with you. They've been buried with some of the Certex projects and our CRS update. So I, I was hoping to have that for you today. Uh, but I think we'll, we'll probably be into next week on that. But it's gonna go through some of the history of the procurement, some of the challenges, some of the issues that we have and, and outline. Uh, some of our plans for, for moving forward. So you should have that uh, very shortly to you as well. And uh, I think that's all I had for now, Mayor. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Andy. All right. Uh, that brings us to item number eight. Russell, if you could read that into the record.
Certainly, Mayor. Item number eight is an ordinance on first reading. It's an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida. Amending the text of the future land use element of the adopted Town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan. Pertaining to the compatibility of future land use map amendments, providing for transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency and other review agencies defined in Florida Statute one sixty-three point three one eight-four. Subsection one, subsection C. Providing for recertification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on this item?
I think it's an important issue, Your Honor. Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Think I was promoted.
I had court hearings today, okay.
All right, thank you. Uh, is there any public comment on this item?
Uh, Mayor, we have uh, one person with their hand raised, but I noticed that person's hand was raised earlier, but I'll call on them to see if they have anything to add to this item. Mr. Siegel, can you hear us? Mr. Siegel, can you hear us?
Yeah, my hand, well, actually must have been raised by accident. I have nothing to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
All right, Mayor, I see no other hands raised for this particular item.
All right. Then Russell, if you could please call the, call the uh, question.
Certainly, Mayor. Just give me one second. Uh, okay. Okay, uh, Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Um, item number nine, please.
Item number nine is also an ordinance on first reading. This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending Article one thirty zoning map amendments. Of the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code to modify the uh, considerations for zoning requests and make revisions of a housekeeping nature. Providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion on this item? Any public discussion on this item?
I see no hand, hands raised on this item, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Russell. Um, if you could please call the question.
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, then item number ten.
Item ten is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, in response to RFQ number twenty-one dash one zero one. Authorizing a purchase order to Integrity East Coast Inc. in the amount of eleven thousand two twenty-five. To complete the exterior town hall painting project, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney. To enter into an agreement and providing an effective date. And I know uh, the town administrator has a change on this particular item, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, Mayor, before, before we even get a motion in a second on this, I may need some help from Keith on the formatting. But I do have a, an unconventional request for you all. Uh, we've been collecting bids on this to get this project done for quite some time. We were trying to move it forward. The other day, uh, vendor number one, the lowest price bidder, removed themselves from contention. Uh, they just don't feel that they have the man, they have a manpower shortage. They don't have the resources to get the job done in a timely manner. What we want with a case like that is then go to the next lowest price. Haven't had time to fully vet the paperwork on, on vendor number two. So the unconventional request that I have for council is to ask you to approve, there's seven hundred dollars difference. Between vendor number two and vendor number three. And so we'd ask you to approve the dollar amount up to the vendor number three. Staff will continue to try to negotiate, get that paperwork in order so that we can get that, that project moving forward. What we would normally do in a case like this, quite honestly, is we would, we would withdraw the item. We'd get the paperwork together. We'd bring it back to you all at the following meeting. The challenge now is, the next meeting is three weeks from tonight. And that brings us three weeks closer to the rainy season, so we'd like to try to move this project forward as quickly as we can. And, and obviously whatever questions you have for us, Mayor and Council, we're happy to a- to answer. But uh, Keith, I need, may need you to help shape that, that motion.
Yeah, Andy, what is the maximum amount of the expenditure if they went with uh, number three?
That would be. Twelve thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars.
Twelve thousand, okay. So what the council would do if they elect to choose to, to follow uh, your request on this one. Would be a motion to approve an amount not to exceed twelve thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars for the town hall repainting. Uh, to commence uh, negotiations with uh, number two on the list, and if those negotiations fail. Uh, to uh, move on to uh, number three. So then at least you have a cap on the amount, uh, and the hope is that you will end up going with the cheaper one. Um, uh, but if not, at least the funds are there for you to execute it with the third, uh, if you can't uh, consummate a deal with number two.
That, that's correct, Keith. Thank you. And obviously, if we're not able to do that, this item would then come back before the council.
I'll make a motion on what Keith said.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, great. Thank you. Um, is there any discussion from the council on this item? All right, seeing none. Um, is there any public comment on this item?
Uh, Councilmember Kozinski was waving his.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I, I can't see everybody in this. Sorry about that. Go ahead, David. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Um, I, 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 my only concern is that um. In uh, future budget requests, we um, make a concerted effort that the corporations that are making requests. Since uh, they're required to have insurance, required to comply with various issues of the law, that um. Each of these corporations. Um, before they can submit a bid, that they assert that they are an active corporation. I, I had learned that um, one of the corporations were not, and that was just something that um. Uh, really concerned me because how can an inactive corporation contain proper insurance, proper uh, procedures according to state law? And um, it, it really concerned me. So um, really something that I um, strongly believe in. Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right. Any other council comment on this item?
No, but I do have a question that David just raised is, is, is number two and number three one of those?
And, and the only thing I'll say is if, 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 when we do our due diligence, if all their paperwork is not in order, we're not gonna award the contract.
Okay.
And, and to make that clear, once a, a vendor selected, the procurement department, not myself, not Andy. Does that analysis by looking at all the paperwork, looking at the corporate status, looking at the insurance in place, et cetera. And, and then if they do not find them to be responsive to the bid, that's when they go to the next uh, responsive uh, bidder for, after that. So. That's all done by, by staff and doesn't, I don't even think it's ever reached into your eyes' attention because they funnel through that way before it even gets us.
Yeah, the only thing I'll add to that is, under our procurement code, when we go out to bid. We actually have a, a very robust vetting process. Because of the dollar amount here, this was, this is just a couple of thousand dollars over my authority. The, the code allows us to collect bids and, and, and move forward from that point. So it, it doesn't trigger quite the same review process. But again, we're gonna make sure they have their paperwork in order or we're not gonna give them the, the work.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, is there any public comment on this item?
I don't see any hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, if you could please uh, call the question.
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember uh, Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
And Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number eleven, please.
Item number eleven is a resolution of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the issuance of its improvement revenue refunding bond. Taxable series twenty twenty-one in the principal amount of not to exceed seven million, seven hundred and fifty thousand. To refinance the town of Southwest Ranches Improvement Revenue Bond Series twenty sixteen. Authorizing the private negotiated sale of the bond to TD Bank NA pursuant to the terms and conditions. Of a loan agreement with the town of Southwest Ranches. TD Bank NA approving the execution and delivery of said loan agreement, providing certain other matters in connection with the issuance of the bond and providing an effective date.
Very good. Thank you, Russell. Um, Marty, I know you were planning on speaking on this, but you may have some technology issues there. Let me see if we can, can we hear you?
Can you hear me? Testing one, two, three. Oh, great. All right, thank you.
All yours, Marty.
Okay, great. Thank you. I got an echo though, uh, involved. Well, tonight, uh, I'm. Oops. Presenting a march, our final march towards debt freedom with the refinance of our two thousand six. Way versus two thousand twenty-one.
Marty, I think you're better off unhooking your headset.
Okay, how about now? Can you?
Yes.
Okay, still got some feedback. I apologize. Uh, let me give you a background. We had a twenty. Twenty-year note that we've been paying interest only for the last five.
You may want to turn the sound off on your workstation.
Okay, how's that? Can you hear me at all?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Good, okay. Let it go. Um, we've been paying interest only. But tonight, uh, we have uh, same. Terms, conditions, fifteen years remaining. Uh, I hope you heard before we. Making interest and principal, uh, we had a competitive bid. Uh, and a process and ultimately our TD Bank, one of. our TD Bank, one of our banking partners, was the lowest bidder, resulting in a significant reduction in interest rates from 3.25 to 1.92, and that represents over a 40% rate reduction. A result in a guaranteed savings of $660,000 plus of interest over the 15, over the 10 years, guaranteed 10 years. The provision is not exercised, we will receive a over $700,000 interest daily. The impact, as it relates to our trim, can be seen in your Exhibit 2, the last page, and that would be of 96 in the agenda, nice spreadsheet, I'm holding it up for everyone to see, who may be watching. A before and after, and its impact comprises of a $28 savings per $250,000 within the town. Closing is expected to take place before the end of this month, Mayor, just give you a heads up, because we'll meet you in town hall, probably virtually, or maybe in person to sign the documentation. And this will take place immediately effective May 1st. I wanted to thank legal counsel heavily involved, that's a huge team, and because my sound is so bad with the feedback, I'll try to write back to Keith if he has anything else to include. Thank you very much. For any questions?
The only two things I would add, Marty, and it's only because your sound was jumbled, and, you know, no one knows the financial aspects of the refinance better than you, but from a legal standpoint, standpoint, we had two major issues. The town was looking to make the former CCA property a profit center of some sort, whether it goes forward with the current vendor who has it under contract, or a future vendor, now that we know that Amazon's coming to that area as well. You know, clearly, that property has, you know, value that the town is looking to recapture. The old note had two main issues. One, it was tax-free. So what that meant is, the town could not lease it out or otherwise, make any money on it at all, without violating the terms of the note. The second issue was that that note had a major balloon payment that would have caused everyone's out-of-labor taxes to rise exponentially in the next year. That was of concern to administration. So as a result, the town took advantage of highly competitive interest rates right now, to probably the lowest time in the history for a municipality, and through our partnership with TD, they agreed to a long-term lock-in at that rate, which although taxable, still saves the town and the taxpayers a significant amount of money moving forward. So that's why it's here for your consideration, and it's important to get this both taxable and lower for a longer period of time, so that our residents aren't impacted through the purchase of this property.
Excellent, thank you, Keith. Thank you, Marty. Yeah, this is really important. It reduces the risk for the town going forward, and locks in an exceptional rate for us as we move forward as well. So certainly, there are other options that may make this more of a moot point, but it's good to have all our bases covered. So, great work. I just, I want to do a shout-out to Marty and his team. You know, it's easy to get caught up in kind of the normal stuff, the budget, the reporting, the this, the that, but it's these kind of special projects that make a huge difference that he recognizes and his staff recognizes and we're able to take advantage of. So thank you, Marty, and please pass on that thanks to your staff. Great job. All right, any council comments on this item?
Steve, I'd like to say just that, you know, you and Bob are the finance guys, and, you know, if you're supporting this, I'm supporting this. You know, I know you guys have formal training in it, are very good at it, and I'm glad you're on the team, especially right now.
Yeah, this is a good, a good opportunity. Yeah, David.
I agree 100% with what Gary just said. With you two guys there, great leadership. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, Marty, I have never seen municipal rates this low, municipal bond rates. I know it's probably an unusual time, but phenomenal job on this, and hopefully, it's 15 years before we have to read a contract this long again as well. But thank you, great job.
You're welcome.
Excellent, very good. All right, let's open it up to public comment.
Okay, Mayor, we have one speaker, looks like Mr. Lasky. Mr. Lasky, can you hear us, sir? Mr. Lasky, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
We can hear you, Jim, but it's very, very long, very soft.
My concern is, why in the heck, with the fragile balance sheet that this town has, would we go out to try to make a profit in an area where you guys, and respectfully, you have no idea what you're doing when it comes to investing, and investing in vacant land, and baking, and investing on the hope that one guy's going to develop a technology to compete with somebody who already owns the market in the green mulching world, or whatever you want to call it, and/or trying to go after somebody like Amazon. People that go after Amazon, generally speaking, have a lock on those types of businesses and do quite well with it. I just don't understand the risk-reward on this. It's insane. I invest every day. I trade 45 some odd stocks, but I don't trade them very much. I invest for the long term. You have to have, you have to have an edge or something to be this basic in the investment world, with the vacant land, having to develop the vacant land, get the permit and the technology together. Now, the warehousing would be a little easier, but still, that's a very difficult customer, and you find that people that got those big types of investment customers. And they do a big job, and they do it with a lot of public capital. They don't reach into their town and try to do a private partnership like this. So all I can say, if you're ever able to get free from this, or if you're able to sell it, even if you lose a couple of million bucks, get the heck out of it, because what have you already spent? Add up all the interest you've already spent, not to mention the present value of all that money you've already spent, and what you could have done with it. That, I just, you don't belong in it. You never belonged in the prison business. That never made any sense. I was never against that. I just couldn't see how you'd make any money out of it. You see what you got going on today with prisons? You'd be, you'd talk yourself out of business after all that fight. Anyway, I get my hook from Mr. Muntz over there. So have a good evening.
Thank you, Jim.
We have another, no other speakers, Mayor.
All right. Any other council comment? All right, Russell, if you could please call the question?
Certainly, Mayor. Did we get a motion in a second?
Oh, you know what? I don't think we did. I don't think we did. We jumped right into Marty's explanation. We have a motion on this item.
That's correct.
I moved. Second.
Okay, so now you want me to take the roll, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay, Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Before we read in item number 12, I just want to give kind of a quick introduction to the next set of items that were coming up. They're all tied together, and basically, what we're doing is putting these items out there, approving them, so that we, as a town, can bring them to the county and attempt to get certain projects funded through the one penny tax. I'm sure everybody's aware of the one penny tax that went in a couple of years ago. And so these are projects that are all under the umbrella of what those funds go towards, and so these projects are ones that we're putting forth, but we need to approve them as a council, so.
Mayor, it would not be inappropriate, if you so choose, to read them all into the record and have comment on all of them, because, again, it's free money essentially that we're looking for for the county. So, you know, it may be an easier way to handle this by treating it that way.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense to me. They're all, they're, I mean, these, these projects are spread throughout the town. They're all similar types of projects, so I think they're all worthy. I'm certain they're all worthy. They've all been reviewed. They've been on our list of projects to do that are reviewed by the Drainage Board, and so these are all good projects. Andy, I don't know if you had any other additional comments you wanted to make before we turned over the council?
Yeah, if I may, very quickly, Mayor, the resolutions before you tonight are all support resolutions, and it's necessary for us to take the next step through the surtax pipeline, so to speak. So each one of these is a separate resolution, because that's what's required in order for us to continue to pursue it. Each project, as you alluded to, Mayor, has been fully vetted by the Drainage Board. The projects that are here would be funded in different stages based on the status. For example, item number 12 is ready for construction, and that's what the resolution speaks to. Items 13 through 20 are designed. The total amount here of all of these, these nine items, is just a little over $1.3 million. And if we continue to be successful, those funding agreements for the individual projects would then come back before the council again. So tonight, all we're asking you to do is really say, yes, the council officially supports these projects and are moving forward with them. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good, very good. So I think, is there any objection to the recommendation that Keith made that we put all these together? They still remain separate resolutions, but we vote on them once on all of them?
I feel bad for Russell, he's got to read all of them.
Yeah, I was just going to tell Russell, take a drink of water.
Mayor, if I may say, before I read all of these and put everybody to sleep, on item number 20, we do have a scribbler's error that has to be corrected. It's related to the title as well as to the body of the resolution. It alludes to 205th Avenue and 50th Place, but in fact, it should be 205th Avenue and 49th Court. So I'll read it into the record with the correct location, but I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, and when we have a motion on that particular item, well, I guess we're going to do a motion.
Yeah, let's do this, Russell, let's leave that one off. We'll do that one separate and just read the rest, and then we'll do two votes.
Okay, all right, fine. So we'll do one for 12 through 19, and then one separately for 20.
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, so here we go. Item number 12 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, supporting the submission of the Green Meadows Drainage Phase III Project to Broward County Transportation Surtax Program to be considered to, or to be considered for funding, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents deemed necessary to help effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing for an effective date. Item number 13 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, supporting the submission of the Southwest 54th Place Drainage Connection from Ivanhoe Canal to Dykes Road Project to Broward County Transportation Surtax Program to be considered for funding, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents deemed necessary to help effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing for an effective date. Item 14 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, supporting the submission of the Frontier Trails Drainage Improvement Project to Broward County Transportation Surtax Program to be considered for funding, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents deemed necessary to help effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing for an effective date. Item 15, resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, supporting the submission of the Green Meadows Drainage Improvement along Southwest 164th Terrace Project to Broward County Transportation Surtax Program to be considered for funding, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to help to execute any and all documents deemed necessary to help effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing for an effective date. Item 16 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, supporting the submission of the Dykes Road Piping Project to Broward County Transportation Surtax Program to be considered for funding, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents deemed necessary to help effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing for an effective date. Item 17 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, supporting the submission of the Southwest 185th Way and Southwest 69th Street Drainage Project to Broward County Transportation Surtax Program to be considered for funding, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents deemed necessary to help effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing for an effective date. Item 18 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, supporting the submission of the Dykes Road Flood Protection Improvement Project to Broward County Transportation Surtax Program to be considered for funding, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents deemed necessary to help effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing for an effective date. And finally, item 19 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, supporting the submission of the Country Estates Southwest 63rd Street Drainage Project to be, to Broward County Transportation Surtax Program to be considered for funding, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents deemed necessary to help effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing for an effective date.
Well done.
Bravo, bravo. By the way, I missed one of them. Could you reread it?
I make a motion to approve.
I second that motion.
Excellent. Any discussion from the council on this item, these items? All right, is there any public comment on these items?
Nope, I don't see any public comments on this item, Mayor.
All right, very good. Russell, if you could please call the question?
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes, Mayor.
Very good. And then if you could walk us through those changes to item 20?
Certainly, Mayor. In item 20, the resolution alludes to the project being at Southwest 205th Avenue and Southwest 50th Place. It was merely a scribbler's error. The correct location should be Southwest 205th Avenue and 49th Court. So every reference to Southwest 50th Place in the final version of the resolution will be corrected to 49th Court, and what we ask is for a motion to approve, subject to the scribbler's error.
Russell, can you read it in with the proper modification?
I intend to, absolutely. So this is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, supporting the submission of the Southwest 205th Avenue and Southwest 49th Court Place, I'm sorry, 49th Court Drainage Project to Broward County Transportation Surtax Program to be considered for funding, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents deemed necessary to help effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
If you could just say "as amended," it would be approved.
As amended by the location. That can.
Great, thank you. Is there any further comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
Mayor, I don't see any hands raised to speak on this particular item.
All right, Russell, if you could please call the question?
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, thank you. All right, so the next item on our agenda is item number 21, and it's kind of a follow-up item that we had talked about several months ago, related to our boards, and so we wanted to follow up on that. Andy, I think you have an introduction to that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I was just, we do have a question. I was looking for some council input to clarify this as well. My understanding was, when you formed the boards back in last December, we had a lot of interest from some new people. You did a good job of putting some new people interspersed with some of the old holdovers within the advisory boards and gave them a breath of fresh air, but we had more people interested than we're able to see. So there was some conversation at that time over what it would take for So there was some conversation at that time over what it would take for somebody to be involved or be seated. And I think one of the things that that council indicated was that if people attended meetings, you know, they attended, let's say, six meetings, that they showed interest, that was something that would qualify them to be considered for membership or to potentially be added to a board. There seems to be a rumor out in the community that gives me some concern, and that's why I wanted council input, was that attending six meetings in a row was like an automatic addition to a board. And I I'm not sure that that was council's intent, and that's why I wanted to come back and 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 get some clarity and some direction from the council on that, so that we can address some of those rumors as as need be. Thank you, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you, Andy. I appreciate the uh opportunity to kind of clarify this, not only for the council, but for residents as well. Certainly do appreciate, uh, I think there is more involvement in the boards now than I've ever seen before, which is really exciting. Um, it really helps out a lot, so that is great. Um, is there any uh council uh discussion on this item? Yeah, Gary.
Yeah, I was uh, you know, originally, uh, like last year, we we went, you know, with the COVID uh pandemic, uh, the Parks Board didn't meet for a whole year. We couldn't get a quorum. Uh, one whole year of projects that were put aside or, you know, navigating new territory. You know, what we all went through uh from last March on, you know, complete shutdown. And the and the whole idea, you know, stemmed from a lack of participation. And uh, you know, suddenly we've got a few, and and this is only on a few uh advisory boards where there's a very robust amount of people who are attending now. Um, and I think what we're, what's gonna happen is um, we need to keep a cap on the uh number of participants. Like uh, when we move the comp board from seven to nine, uh, you know, anything beyond that, I think is gonna get real on uh, it's gonna get real difficult to move an item forward or to or to go to go with anything. So I think we need to work within some sort of framework of a cap on the number of of people who sit on the boards, and that doesn't preclude the people that attend, anybody can attend, and we encourage the attendance. And then we need to figure out a way, and if somebody wants to drop off, that if we have an opening of how we would review uh entertaining, you know, a newer member. You know, based on, do we want to give the people who have attended at large or just sitting? Uh, do we want to give them preference over a a council member pick or something to that effect? Um, I think there's some confusion out there uh regarding that. David, I see you. And but I just, you know, we need we need to really, you know, fi- figure this out, you know.
Great, thank you.
I agree exactly with what Gary was saying, exactly, right on point.
Thanks.
Yeah, Bob.
Yeah, I seem to recollect that uh, and I I didn't go back and watch the video for that meeting, but uh I seem to recollect that we did say that if uh unless my memory is cloudy, uh, but we did say that if you attended six, I don't know about consideration, I thought we'd appoint. Because we also expected people to be rolling off due to lack of attendance. You know, if they missed three, they were gonna be automatically rolled off the board.
Okay.
So I don't know if we should make a decision. I'd love to go back and watch the video, 'cause I'd hate to reverse kind of the commitment we've already made. If my memory is correct.
Right. I think you're, I think you are correct, Bob. I think we did, we did say something to that effect and and um, now we're we're faced with possibly having a committee of twenty five people now.
Parks.
You know, so we have, and then we have some some committees where some people have not shown up. Um, you know, so it it's a mixed bag, you know, a- at this point, but I think we're gonna need to, we're gonna need to clarify this a little bit, a little bit better. Um, yeah, obviously, you can't run the comp board with twenty five people.
Right.
Uh, that's not gonna work. No, we just know that, you know, they'll they'll never get passed the first sentence on the first page. Um, so do we wanna uh make an adjustment here in midstream or um, how how do you think we should proceed? And I'm asking the question to the rest of the council.
Yeah, I I do have some thoughts, but I I Jim, I saw your hand up earlier. I don't know if you'd like to make a comment first.
Mayor, uh, I I don't think that if they get ten, six meetings, that they're automatically on the board. Like Gary said, I think you could end up with twenty five or thirty people. I know every one of the councils sit on a board at one time. Uh, nine people on the comp board is a lot. There's a lot of diversity there, which is great. But when you start getting too much, there's too many people that uh, you know. Now, for people to attend, absolutely. Uh, the more the merrier to attend, to sit and listen what's going on, get involved in town. But I do think that there really does need to be a cap on the number of people on these boards. Uh, it could get out of hand otherwise, I think.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'll ju- yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, um, I'm I'm really interested. My thoughts are that I'm really interested in um um maybe making a change. Um, if it has, it happens to be midstream, it's happens to be midstream that um if before anybody is added to any of the uh advisory boards, that um they must have a majority of the council approve any changes to any numbers. And that's that that's kind of where my thoughts are going with this.
Thank you, David. Yeah, that's that's my thought process as well. I think, uh, you know, right now, frankly, if we add members to the board, we have to increase the cap of the board, so there's not, it's not like we can just add members, that we actually have to, we have to vote on it to increase the cap on the number of members that can be on that board. So um, and I I just think at the end of the day, um, there is no limit to the number of residents that can attend and can provide input. And we've found that to be very valuable, and um, the difference is is basically the voting. And and I think that um I don't recall exactly how the wording was before, but I think that um this clarity, where what we're talking about here, um, I think it's important. I think it's important that um we do limit to the number that are on the, that we set on the board. And that, but I also think the other side of that coin is that if somebody drops off that board either because they can no longer serve or because they're not participating, that um I think we need to really give first preference to those that have attended um over other folks that may have just put in an application. Um, we want folks that are engaged, that are have kind of a a vested interest in participating in these boards. That's when we get the best product, so um, I think that's the middle ground that we should be moving towards.
Yeah, I I agree, Mayor, that we, you know, we should give uh the the person that's attending should be uh be given more consideration or weight in the versus somebody that just pops up out of nowhere, you know.
Right.
Say, hey, I want to stay on the board, you know. I think that, I think that should be one of the priorities on something like that. So moving forward, do we want to uh, do we want to put a cap on the boards of like nine people on any board? Or does it do you do it board by board or, you know?
Today, it's board by board, and I think that works out well, because some of the boards, like the Parks Board, um, I I think it helps to have more members. Um, different people live in different parts of town and have more activity in different parks. But uh, for the comp board, I think we're, you know, we need to draw the limit there. And I think right now, Keith, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe right now, every board has um its own limit to the number of members.
Of course, and it's always uh changeable by the council at any time.
Right.
I think it's a reasonable approach.
Okay, yeah, Jim. You're on mute, Jim. Jim, you're on mute.
I'm muted.
Sorry about that. Mr. Mayor, have we come up with a way that if somebody's not participating, that we can replace them? I mean, that would be a great thing. If uh, somebody hasn't showed up and there's somebody sitting there that's attended four or five meetings, are really involved, and the other person hasn't shown up, is there a way to get that person out and get somebody else in?
Yeah, that's a great point. We did talk about that as well. Matter of fact, I think that was kind of the primary thing we were talking about, and the adding was kind of uh an add-on, and I think maybe that's why it wasn't as clear. But um, we had talked about an individual that did not attend uh three times in a row that were three times. Um, we talked about a number of things. Three times in a row, three times over the life of the board, three times excused or unexcused. Um, we talked about a number of things. Um, and I think it would be helpful, so long as we're talking about this, um, to clear that up as well.
Well, Mayor, whoop. Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yeah, that'd be a good thing, because uh, you've got somebody sitting there that's attended, and there's somebody that hasn't. Uh, you know, the the board's full, there's no room for somebody that's really wanting to get involved if there's somebody else not attending that that don't care, so yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, the only thing I'll I'll add to to what Councilmember Albritton said is we're in, we're preparing a an attendance report for you all to give you some idea of who's been attending and who hasn't been attending those meetings. Not not based on residents who may sit in, which, but we can probably go back and revisit that, but certainly based upon the the board members themselves that that you've appointed, uh, what their attendance has been.
And I and I guess my only, I I that's that's great, that's good. My only concern is this. There are individuals that, you know, this is a volunteer position working on those boards, and there are individuals where certainly things come up. Uh, they may be sick, they may have a child that's sick, they may have some other obligation unexpectedly pop up that they need to do. And um, they can call and let the liaison know that, you know, they're not gonna be able to attend tonight, and um, and I and I I think that's that's an excused absence. I don't, to me, that does not count against somebody. Um, on the other hand, um, I know all of the uh, the administrative liaisons, they 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 do their best to contact all the members, and if they go out there and attempt to contact and they don't get any response, and then a member does not show up, um, that's, to me, is a big problem, and three of those happening in a year, um, to me at that point, it may be time to make a change.
Yeah, if you're looking for input, I I I agree with you, Steve. I mean, you know, I think we should really just be looking at the unexcused uh absences, you know, the call, no, no call, no show, no, no nada, you know, uh, as a basis of uh removal. You know, and if it's a, if it's a a council member's pick and they want to put him back on, that's their prerogative as opposed to the at-large. You know, or or at least I believe that's, I believe that's what we've discussed in the past, you know. You know, so but it's on, and it's on them. But right now, I think we're use, we're gonna have, you know, we're using uh Andy and staff to, the liaisons, to let us know who who's who's not there and who is there, you know, that kind of.
Yeah.
Most are at the meeting.
Yeah, we're we're trying to clarify those, right now, the excused versus unexcused, the people who have an issue and and make the phone call as opposed to no shows, because if you recall, the the typical boards uh MO in the past was whoever wasn't there, they would just excuse their absences and move on. And and so there are people who who failed to attend and failed to call in, who were getting the benefit of excused absences. And we tried to remove that from the process, that somebody has a legitimate reason or unable to make it, that would be an excused absence. Somebody doesn't show, that's unexcused, and that's the report that we're we're clarifying for council, so that you you'll know who's, you know, although most of you attend most of the meetings all the time, uh, we'll give you the report, which will further document who's attending and who isn't, Mayor.
Yeah, it's not, it's not fair to the people that show up that, you know, if you don't have a quorum, because somebody's just not, you know, doesn't doesn't care about it, or something to that effect.
Yeah, and it's gonna become even more important here, I think, in the next couple of months, as we transition back to um in-person meetings, because then you're talking about a group of people that, you know, get in their vehicle, drive over to Town Hall, show up, and turns out there's one person short, and so they wait for twenty minutes, and you get back in your car and you go back home, and that that doesn't motivate anybody to participate in the in the board. So so I think it's be good to get this cleaned up now.
Yep, that's a good idea. By the way, I think we have, do you want to open it up to the public or anything?
Yeah, yeah.
God, thanks, I think.
Yep, Jim, I'll let Jim go comment, and then we'll open up the public.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more quick question. We're still gonna have an application process, right? They'll fill out an application. Uh, even if they attend, I mean, sitting there for six meetings, ten meetings in a row, we'll have an application on them, so we'll be able to get in touch with them, not just, you know, somebody showing up and so we'll have a way to touch bases with them, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Russell, if you could please uh like to open it up to the public.
Certainly, Mayor. The first speaker is Chris Brownlow. Ms. Brownlow?
Hi, Russell. Thank you, and uh, thank you to the council. I am glad you're addressing this. Uh, I've had the blessing of sitting and volunteering on two boards. The Ed Board since twenty ten and the Parks Board since twenty twelve, and oddly enough, the Parks Board was my initial love. Uh, but being an educator, you know, I I found my way onto the part, uh, the Ed Board, you know, and served as secretary, which I still am for Ed, and now I um, I'm fortunate enough to be the chair of my initial love, the Parks. Point being, you know, stayed steady and I volunteered, so I concur with your feelings that a person needs to show the commitment in order to, for lack of a better term, be recognized. And as we do get larger, quorum is an issue, because we need fifty plus one. So say you're a board of nine, we would need five people. As you get larger, if you're twelve, you'd need seven people. And so, yes, I can agree that that has been an issue in the past. The larger you are, sometimes the harder it is to uh achieve a quorum. And unfortunately and embarrassingly, that was our issue last year for the Parks Board. I think it's important in deciding uh who gets assigned, that the ideals that align with a board and the mission of the town match. Why put, let's say, why put someone on the education board if they were anti-public school or or anti-education? Why put someone on the Parks Board? Just because those are the two babies I'm involved with, if if they were uh anti um wildlife or anti-public spaces. So I I think placement and a person's desire uh and uh what their familiarity in education is is very important. And may I ask you this, could you consider going to the boards when you do these applications? I I don't know if that's out of line. I don't know if we've ever thought of that, but perhaps we could reach out to the boards and let them know, hey, you have an applicant, uh, what do you think? Could we also consider a cheat sheet, if you will, of Robert's rules that all of our boards could have to help us keep meetings in line, to know what's appropriate and inappropriate? I know sometimes we get excited, myself included, and perhaps we don't address issues in a proper manner, we speak out of turn, and if we all had maybe a Robert's Rules cheat sheet, that might help keep us in line for our meetings. Um, and I I think I I just, I made some notes talking about this. I I think those were the items I I want to address. And uh, I concur with you. If you have an interest, put your time in. It's only fair. Show up. If folks show up, they are listened to. Although they don't have a voting right, they do go in uh the record as being a guest and having input and discussion comments. So thank you for giving me this time. I appreciate it.
Great, thank you, Chris.
Hey, Mayor, the next speaker is um Noel Hollingsworth. Mr. Hollingsworth, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, yes.
Okay, um, a couple of things that uh, from the meeting that that seems the council's a little bit um ambiguous on. One, the three missing meetings uh are without excused absence, but the only, you said at the time, the only one that could excuse the absence is the council. And the administration was to bring this list to all of you at that time, when there's three. And then the person who put them on the board, or the council who put them on the board, would replace them. In other words, if they do, as a council member, pu- place this person on the board, they can replace that person with whoever they choose, while those that are by the council, which is above the five, would be done on a council-wide basis. That is what was decided back when you That is what was decided back when you did it in, what was it, December, I believe it was, or November. So, the other thing is that those that have six meetings, they have come six meetings, not continuously, but six meetings, should get preference to being on that board, but they are somewhat up to speed on what the ideas of that board and the ideas that they are looking at right then, as to the comprehensive plan board, which is, I believe, is, I believe is the most intense board, drainage being the second most intense board, they know what they're at, and they've got somewhat up to speed. One of the problems I've seen with the board this year and last year is that people get on the board and they're not up to speed, and they don't realize just how intense the reading for drainage and for comprehensive plan board has to be in order to take care of business, and the education process is very hard. So, what I'm looking at to tell you is that the person who appointed that individual to a board still retains their ability to appoint that person, while those that are appointed by the council over the five is a council idea, you know, you're saying that all of them being appointed by the council tonight, and I heard that twice from two different members of the council. I think it should remain the first five people on the board or by the council, as they're in the vigil appointments, and be above that, should be by the council, thank you very much.
Thank you, Noel.
And Mayor, the next speaker is, let's see, he dropped off, okay, there was another speaker that was waiting, but I don't see him with his hand raised anymore. There he is, okay, Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Gonzalez, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, again.
Okay, I mentioned it earlier that I am on the drainage committee, and I appreciate the opportunity as a residence to be on that committee, but one of the things that I did want to say is that certain ones of these boards, like in our particular board, we have several of the individuals that have a background in drainage, they're actually engineers with other cities, and that did come in extremely handy, as we discuss a lot of these projects, because their knowledge is phenomenal. So that's something the board might want to keep in mind, is that on these really specific boards where it's very technical, yes, you can have some residents that will have a learning curve, but then you also want to have some members on there that are very knowledgeable in the field that they are looking at, especially if you're talking law enforcement or drainage or fire, you might want to have some of the members be very knowledgeable with that specific subject. And that's, again, I want to thank you for letting me be on the board, but at the same time, it's good to have members on there that are really, really knowledgeable about that specific subject. Thanks again.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and I think that's, I mean, we've heard that from a number of the residents here, and I think it makes a lot of sense that, that the council have a role in, as we've had in the past, where each council member assigns one, but then for the at-large, we still are the ones that are making the selection as a group, so I think that's important. All right, what else, is there anything else from, on this topic that we wanted to clarify? Yeah, David.
I don't know if it's appropriate to make a motion at this point, but, you know, like as I stated earlier, I think it's important that for any of the advisory boards, that there isn't, that it's clear that somebody doesn't get an automatic addition onto an advisory board, that anybody that's attending six-plus meetings still must make an application through the council to be an additional appointment to a board, because it is our responsibility as a council to make sure that these boards function. And as Chris Brownlow had stated earlier, if you start going multiple, multiple members on an advisory board, nothing's going to get done, it's going to be talk to death, nothing's going to be done, and taking the trust of the town electorate as elected members, I think each of us has a responsibility to make sure that certain things happen, and if we, as a council, come up with an idea that somebody's automatically added to a board, that slows down the process of the trust that the electorate has given us, then I don't think that's holding our responsibility up to the electorate. So I don't know if that's something that we need to clarify, but my thoughts are that before anybody is added to any advisory board, that it still must go through a council approval, and so be it be a minimum three positive vote, but I really, really think that that's important. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Andy, let me ask you a question, I think based on the discussion here, I don't want to, three or six months from now, have us sit back and try and recollect what it is we talked about in this meeting and what we decided, so what I'd like to task you to do is to take this discussion that we've had here this evening, and put that into a policy that can then come back to the board, I think you've got some pretty good direction on where we want to go, but I'd really like it to be a written policy that we can refer to, and if we don't get it quite right the first time, we can revisit and tweak it and make it better going forward, but would that be all right?
The only thing I'll say to that is I don't think we need a new policy, and we have a board policy, so this, we'll just clarify a portion of that and change that, but I think Russell and I'll go back and listen to this discussion two or three more times to make sure we're fully clear on it, and they, we will work to draft something that I think will capture the council's intent.
Perfect, so it sounds like this discussion was clear as mud for everybody.
We'll try to drill through it, thank you.
Awesome.
Andy, can I just add that once we get that draft policy, we'll bring that forward to council at some point with a resolution for them to formally adopt?
Yes, yes, yeah, because they formally adopted the board policy, so this would be a change to that, so, yeah, we would go through that process, thank you, Russell, you're right.
Excellent.
Sounds like a plan. You know, that adds some clarity.
Very good, all right. Gary? Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening, really appreciate it.